Praise religions.
Praise the religion to the choir of the United States of America and to the Republic where it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, now we'll move on to roll call.
Councilmember Mizony?
Yep.
Councilmember Palphini?
Here.
Councilmember Verasan?
Present.
Councilmember Wetstein?
Present.
Mayor Perham?
Present. Okay, now we'll move on to acceptance of agenda and urgency items. Is there anything that we want to move to urgent or remove from the agenda? All right. Accept the motion to accept the agenda as posted.
I'll make that motion.
I will second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Any opposed? Motion carries. At this point, we'll move on to non-agenda public comment. This is a point for anybody in the public that wants to comment on an item that's not on our agenda. Please come forward and share your comments with us.
Not on the agenda?
Not on the agenda. All right, well, glad to see you.
I think it would be me.
Yeah, if you have a non-agenda item, now is the time. We'd love to hear from you.
So, I live on Evergreen Lane.
Ma'am, I need to come to the podium.
Oh.
Yeah, we've requested you use the microphone so that people at home that watch on YouTube can hear what you're saying.
Okay. So, my name is Cynthia Underhyal, and I live on Evergreen Lane. Excuse me. And I'm speaking for the residents, the other five residents that live on our lane. On the other side of our creek is Carrick Park, and we have issues with people living, you know, adjacent to the park and being in the park after dusk. This issue's been going on for the whole five years that I've lived there, and it's just gotten really bad. The people are now coming down into my property. I've had to ask them to leave many times last summer, and then now that the weather's getting better, it's starting again. And so, I just wondered if there's anything that I can do as far as posting signs or getting patrol out there, or getting a sign that says, "Nobody to be in the park from dusk," you know, after dawn, I mean, I mean after dusk, sorry. Because the signs now say, "No camping overnight." So, the people, you know, they're not camping, they're walking around and, you know, doing things they shouldn't be doing. Hollering and whistling at each other and holler, what do you call it, fighting with each other, things like that. Dogs barking, they've got dogs over there. There's a homeless camp, I don't know if y'all are aware of it, homeless camp, that's on the creek just down from my house. And so, those people are constantly, you know, walking around in the middle of the night with their flashlights. And it's very disturbing. I live alone with my eight-year-old son, and, yeah, I just wondered if something could be done.
Okay.
May I ask questions?
Please.
Justin, could you explain, Chief, do we have jurisdiction in that area, or is that county property?
It's county property. We do respond out there when they request, say, a deputy's, South County deputies were busy in Dunsmere or another contract city. We do occasionally respond to Carrick if needed. Have you contacted the?
Oh, yeah, many times.
Okay.
Yeah.
So, as far as any ordinance, that would be a county ordinance because it's not a city. Within the city, the city does have an hour that you're not to be in the parks any longer, but it doesn't apply out there because it's outside the city. City limits ends right at Angel Valley Road.
Yes, I know.
Yeah.
Okay, so then, how, what do I do? How do I address this matter?
Have you been to any, are they still holding the neighborhood watch meetings out there with the?
Not that I know of. Nora Amaral, I think she's the head of the neighborhood watch.
Why don't we have, I can have a phone conversation with you?
Okay.
If you want to go, once you leave here, the police department, just go in there and give them your name and contact, and they'll give me a message, and I'll return your call.
Okay.
Okay?
Thank you.
And Chief, can I ask one additional question? I know there are some jurisdictional provisions that give you, what is it, 500 feet over the city line?
Well, so, in the past, we've had a countywide agreement with all agencies that, you know, that was granted under, typically under the sheriff to leave your jurisdiction. We actually have agreements to go into the state of Oregon for certain circumstances for up to 50 miles. In this case, being a non-emergency thing, we're not gonna, I always tell people, you know, there are certain codes that give us law enforcement powers outside of, outside of the city, but I always tell them, ultimately, the city of Weed is paying for me to patrol the city of Weed, and they pay the sheriff's department, the county pays the sheriff's department. So, you know, we would respond out there on certain occasion if we were needed, but in circumstance like this, it sounds like more of an ongoing nuisance problem and just might need some extra patrol.
So, what I'm hearing, and please correct me if I'm wrong, is that petitions for the ordinances or signs would have to go to the county of this view through the sheriff's department as opposed to through our department. However, if someone was prowling near a house that was in Weed, it would be the city of Weed that responds?
If they were, well, based on her location, if they were prowling near the house, we would need to be requested by the sheriff's department.
Okay.
Because it's in the county, my house?
Yeah.
Just this much.
By a smidge?
Yes.
It's less than a quarter of a mile outside the city, probably.
Well, if you come to the city of Weed.
So, I have a question in that regard. Well, has anyone out there been to the sheriff with these concerns? You contacted them?
Yeah, many times. And like you were saying, the neighborhood watch has meetings there in the park, actually. And we've discussed, you know, the nuisance of the people that live in that encampment. And, I mean, it just seems like there's nothing anybody can do about it. This has been going on, like I said, for the five years I've lived there. And my neighbors have, the Chris, they've lived there for 65 years. So, I mean, and they know, you know, it's just been an ongoing worsening problem.
Does the recreation district have jurisdiction over the park area?
That is a Weed Parks and Rec area park that they do maintain.
Right. They can post signs?
Right, but as far as making an enforceable rule?
Right.
It would, if, without, without an ordinance, county ordinance, it would be a trespassing issue. They're trespassing, we've asked them to leave, they haven't left, can you tell them to leave? With a, with a ordinance establishing a time, then anybody in there after a certain time is in violation of the ordinance, and it's just a simple solution.
So, the board of supervisors meets on Tuesdays?
Okay.
Except for, there's one Tuesday they're not. I think it's the last Tuesday of the month?
That's correct.
That would be the place to go.
Okay. Thank you so much.
All right. Well, that's a disappointment outside of our purview, but certainly lend some conversation to the sheriff and the board supervisors from our city that this is an issue with neighboring areas. Sir?
My name is Douglas French, and apparently, everyone on the council is in agreement based on what I've read and various campaign flyers and such, that one of the top priorities is to increase the economic viability of the town of Weed. Unfortunately, the main area that needs to be revitalized is Main Street. I've lived in the area for approximately eight years, and there are buildings that have been empty, remained empty with a "for rent" sign up there for eight years. There are a handful, probably two or three owners that are notorious for having empty and unfortunately dilapidated buildings that, no matter how much progress is made, it continues to look like a dump. It looks like a ghetto. And the biggest offender, of course, would be Mark Juarez, and I know that the council has been, for decades, trying to fix that problem. Unfortunately, it seems that Mr. Juarez is playing chess, and the council seems to be playing checkers. And I don't mean that to be insulting. I just, it seems that he's outsmarting us, the city. He's held this town hostage with empty buildings. He's got the same thing going in Dunsmere. I know he's pled poverty as far as upgrading his, and to get the buildings usable and rentable, but I found an article from 2008 where he was giving the same excuses in 2008 that he's probably been giving to you in the, over the last 20 years. Something needs to change in how you deal with the guy. In particular, there must be a financial advantage to him to having empty buildings, being an absentee landlord and just writing it off, tax advantage, perhaps using it as leverage for other loans that are going into his business. It seems to me that you need to change the dynamic, the financial dynamic, of how you deal with him. I don't know if Weed has or has ever considered a vacancy tax on commercial buildings, that after a certain period of time, a building sitting empty, a taxes is put on that spot to change the finances involved with, to make it less likely that somebody is going to get an advantage of having an empty building. So, I throw that out to the council to consider another option, and it's, is that time?
It is, but please finish.
Okay. Another option would be eminent domain, which I know gets very expensive for the city, at least short term, because I'm assuming that the properties can then be turned around and sold to somebody who apparently has the money and the desire to fix those buildings up. And as a result, I think that there could be a real major renaissance on Main Street. There has been some, I'm grateful of the one Bock in particular that is, seems to be thriving. Even that has empty buildings in it, and hopefully, those will turn around quickly because there's enough walkthrough business in the area to justify someone moving in there. But I think, as long as we have a nice ore like the Black Butte and his other properties, it's going to be a fool's errand trying to improve the economy of Weed, that no one's going to want to move in because, again, it looks like a ghetto. That would be it.
All right. Well, thank you for coming and giving your thoughts there. I can say that there is concerted action amongst the council and the staff to redress the issue. Some of those actions, I'm not privy to as I'm accused of those closed sessions, and I'm sure those are items that we can't discuss with the public, those council members who are involved. I will, you know, say that there are several of us on this DSU on businesses on Main Street, and many of us, everyone here, between staff and council, is doing everything in their power to revitalize Main Street and the economy in general. And I am, I share the concern about the empty buildings, and your concerns and the concerns from the majority of the community are not falling on deaf ears.
Thank you.
Mr. French, I want to thank you for your comments. And in regard to the vacancy tax, I want you to know that it is something that has been looked into. We're aware of that particular option, but I would let you know, if you could sing loudly about a vacancy tax, it might help the city of Weed. It is my understanding that it is a tax, and it would have to go to a vote in order for us to be able to do that. I'll let David correct me if I'm wrong.
A general election vote or actual ballots?
That is correct. And so, it would be amongst the members of the city of Weed to acknowledge, at least in my view, that they would want us to pursue that vacancy tax, to be set at whatever the ballot measure would recommend, for instance, 3% of the property value per year. So, there are, while we're researching, there are hurdles such as those that we have to consider and how it is that we can get the word out. So, thank you very much for coming and speaking on it, because it would require a vote of the majority of the members of the city of Weed, and it might even be a three-quarters vote. David, do you know?
Yeah, if it's a general tax, it would require a majority vote. If the voter's decision was that the proceeds of the tax would be limited to one or two specific programs, that would be a special tax, and that would require a two-thirds vote of the citizens.
All right. And I do again, thank you, and encourage the people in the audience, especially those that are following along at home, please come and share your concerns. You know, we hear a lot of things around town, and there's lots of things on social media, but it's important for the public to come and speak at these meetings. In this case, we're all very aware of the issue, but that's how staff and the council finds out about, you know, the majority concern from the public that, you know, people are sharing with our concern and that we're on the right track with our priorities, and as well as to, you know, again, let people know.
How is a tax like that, and how is the process initiated to get on the ballot?
I would say the number one thing that you could do is to flood our emails from citizens of our community that they want a tax, but it would be all the standard procedures for any ballot. It can be brought by the citizens themselves or by the board. David, correct me if I'm wrong.
And that would be administered by the city clerk?
No, there's, there's two ways to put a tax on the ballot. One is for the city council to do so, and the other way is for a citizen's initiative to do so, and that initiative would have to be filed with the clerk prior to circulating the petition for signatures.
But you can also place it on the ballot if you have enough public support behind it?
Yes.
To feel it's worthwhile.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Go out there and petition.
Fill that room back there.
All right. Do we have any other non-agenda public comment tonight? All right, we will move on to council member announcements, meeting reports, and comments. And we will begin tonight with council member Verasan.
Announcement. We had the Lao New Year was very successful. Sorry. We had the Lao New Year here at, on April 5th at the community center. It was very successful. We had over 400 people that showed up to join the whole New Year celebration for the Lao community here. It was the biggest one that we have ever put on together in, in the city of Weed here. We had people all the way from San Diego, Modesto, Merced, Stockton, Sacramento, all the way up to Seattle that came and joined us. And it was, it was one of the most, biggest celebrations that we've had, and we were very, very happy that we had the whole community that came and joined us and celebrated with us. And to show the community or to show the people here our culture and our heritage, and to preserve that and pass on to our younger generation, or to instill that tradition or that spark to say, "Hey, can we do this again next year? This, it was fun, it was great." You know, that's, that's what we were aiming for, and we did. And really appreciate all the community members that came. We had all the seniors that came and just to peek and see, "Hey, what you guys have going on here?" And we brought them all in and fed them, and, and it was a great turnout. So, really appreciate that. Hopefully, next year, we will do, you know, another event and, and have another successful year. So, thank you very much. That's all I have.
All right, thank you. Councilmember Mizony?
Nothing tonight.
Okay. Councilmember Wetstein?
I had the privilege of being able to go for the afternoon session of the ROCE workshop number three. Wonderful event with lots of members from our community, with lots of interesting ideas, different ways to approach things. I really appreciated that it was a, really a good collaborative process with probably 20 people there discussing about businesses that they wanted to bring into the city of Weed, potential locations that they could do that. So, it was, it was quite a privilege to participate with that, and it was really well put together. So, it was a good event.
All right, thank you. Mayor Prother and Palphini?
Let me load this up a little bit. First of all, Family Fun Day, 1,500 to 2,000 folks were there. I don't, couldn't guess any closer than that. There was just a whole bunch of folks. For me, it just shows that if you give people a reason to come to Weed, they will come. If there's a reason to participate, they will participate, which will lead me to the next thing. On May 14th, there is the Fourth and Last Recharge Committee by Siskiyou Economic Development Council, and I forget the other acronym, but, so, that's at the Weed Community Center. So, we've had, I've been to the second one and the first one, you've been to the third one, I think Daryl's been to a few too. So, maybe we can make it one last hurrah, see what some conclusions are. I know I just sent off some information to one of those committee members that were there on the demographics that were included in the Siskiyou, there was a commission that we did for resiliency, and it was like a 300-page document that they wanted the population stats from, young, old, locations. So, I forwarded that to them today. I also attended what's called the CWPP, and I, since I can't recall the acronym, I will let Daryl, he was there, so he can finish up with that one. And Bachi Ball is starting. I saw Bachi Ball BBQ yesterday, so fun is coming, summer's here. Oh, before I forget, thanks to all of those folks for helping Fire, Public Works, Police, the city itself, who contributed to Family Fun Day through TOT. And just, there was over 40 organizations that were there and present, from, biggest example was the Fire Department. We had CDF, US Forest Service, and some CAL, but it was, it was, well, public safety was well represented. Even Smokey the Bear was there. So, thank you.
Thank you for your report. So, as Councilmember Palphini mentioned, we did attend the Community Welfare Protection Plan Committee meeting yesterday at CAL FIRE, along with Chief Carter. So, this was an interagency meeting that involved all of the different stakeholders of the community of Weed and the surrounding areas, from CAL FIRE to the Weed City, Weed City Fire, Fire Safety Council, and several other county organizations. And so, the CWPP is a plan that is put together across California by county as well as by interest areas. We were fortunate that we have an opportunity to do one for the Weed area that is in addition to the Siskiyou County CWPP. So, this is something that is going to be worked on. The charge will be led by our fire chief, the battalion commander from CAL FIRE, and a representative from the Forest Service, but all of the stakeholders are involved, and we will continue to do so. As some of you may know, we recently had a rating from the fire marshal in Sacramento that our entire city was rated one of the highest fire risks. And that may come some certain issues that we may see in the future with insurance rates and other, other things like that. But the good thing about having this CWPP in place is this will allow us to go for grants for fire mitigation and prevention, and to work interagency, you know, so that we're not beholden to just the county, that we as a community, the surrounding areas that participate with the city of Weed, and our stakeholders can work toward improving that in the future. So, we'll report more on that as that develops, and hopefully, that will be, we can take a negative situation, which is the fire rating to turn to a positive by creating more prevention and reducing that rating in the future. Also, wanted to remind everybody of the Steampunk and Sci-Fi Festival that's coming up, May 17th and 18th on Main Street. It is a free, family-friendly, all ages event, so hope everybody can come out and attend that. And also a reminder for Carnival, but you'll get several more reminders before July, I'm sure. All right, with that, that concludes our announcements and reports. We'll move on to the consent agenda. So, I will read through the items here for the consent agenda tonight. Item A, by motion, council will consider resolution number 10-2025 regarding the levy of special tax for fiscal year 2526. Item B, by motion, council will consider resolution number 11-2025, adopting a list of projects for fiscal year 25 and 26 funded by SB1, the Road Repair and Accountability Act of 2017. Item C, by motion, council will consider adopting resolution number 12-2025, authorizing the 2025 and 2026 claim against the local transportation fund. Item D, by motion, council will consider adopting resolution number 13-2025, which is a surplus of the 2014 international ambulance. Item E, by motion, council will consider approving resolution number 14-2025, authorizing the mayor to enter into a subrecipient agreement between the city of Weed and Great Northern Services for the 2025 Community Development Block Grant for the Bowls Creek Stormwater Improvement Project. Item F, by motion, council will consider adopting resolution number 15-2025, adopting procedures for public carions in the city of Weed vacancies and recruitment and retention efforts. Item G, by motion, council will consider approving minutes from April 10th, 2025, regular meeting. Item H, by motion, council, consider approving payment warrants dated April 9th, 2025 through April 24th, 2025, including any voided warrants totaling $853,139.24. And item E, by motion, consider approving and filing the month-end report for April 2025. Are there any items that warrant discussion or that the council would like to see pulled to the regular agenda for discussion?
David, I just need clarification. Do I need to recuse myself on 6A?
No, I believe you are no longer a part of that district, correct?
I don't know if it's been finalized, and so, that's my question of why I shouldn't participate in the vote.
If, if you're uncertain if it's been finalized, then yes, I would recommend you recuse yourself. You do not have to leave the dais. You could just ask that the clerk ensure that you are abstaining from that item in the vote.
So, Sandy, if you can have me abstained from 6A, please.
Okay.
That's based on property of interest?
Yes.
Any other concerns?
With that, with that done, I will move to accept the consent agenda as written.
I'll second.
All right, we have a motion to second. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Do we have any public comment? We have a large public tonight, no comments. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Motion carries with the note that councilmember Wetstein is recused from item A. At this point, we will move on to our public hearing. The council will consider a planning commission recommended uh amendments to the Weed Municipal Code, section eighteen oh eight, oh thirty-five, eighteen oh eight, one ninety-seven, eighteen oh eight, two sixty, eighteen oh eight, three fifty, eighteen oh eight, four four five, eight two eight, eighteen oh eight, four ninety-six and eighteen oh eight, four ninety-seven of chapter eighteen oh eight of the Weed Municipal Code and the City of Weed zoning district regulations to regulate extended hotel stays and move for introduction in the first reading by title only of ordinance number four eight four, two thousand twenty-five. Um so now we'll move on to the staff report for that item.
Thank you, so this has been some time in the, the uh bringing, bringing this before council and drafting this. Um after planning commission review, they recommended no changes and to send it to you. This would redefine uh local hotels for anything that allows more than a thirty day stay uh would be considered an extended stay hotel, requiring them to have certain amenities, including laundry and kitchenette services. Um and um otherwise, they would not be able to rent out the apartments for that uh for beyond thirty days at a time, or excuse me, not apartments, the hotel rooms.
Okay. Okay, um well, we will now open the public hearing and-
And just to clarify again, Mr. Mayor, uh the, the proposed ordinance would prohibit those extended stay hotels within the city.
An extended stay being defined as more than thirty days, correct?
Correct.
All right. Public hearing is, is now open and we will look for a presentation by uh staff or any consultants. Um we just had our staff report, so if there's nothing else to add, uh we'll open, you have a question?
I have a question. Is there any exemption in there if, hopefully this would never happen, that Weed has another issue with the fire?
So, there is no uh exemption at this time. If that was something that you would want to amend, that would be up to you.
We, couldn't we waive that into a declaration of an emergency status?
Yes, I, I think that the, the council will have authority, and so will the Emergency Services Manager likely, um to suspend some of those rules in the event of an emergency. And then there's also the enforcement issue, um which is something that's always in the discretion of uh staff.
Thank you.
All right. Uh so at this time, we will look for testimony from interested parties, uh proponents or opponents. Uh we will be limiting this to three minutes per presentation. And so, if there is anybody to speak for or against, please come to the podium.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Baumik Modi. I do represent the uh motels in the City of Weed. Uh me and my partner are the owner for the Hylo Motel as well as the Townhouse Motel. So, we basically do have uh twenty-five percent of the motel rooms in the City of Weed, um approximately. And these zoning change impact us a huge, um and specifically the way these requirements are written. After speaking with the chief, I understand there are two major concerns that City of Weed has. One, transit occupancy tax. And second is the people who are staying in a hotel thirty days and there might be some exposure where um that hotel might have told, or motel might have told them that um no, they are not a resident because we, after thirty days, we go into the residence issue. So, that's my understanding of the, why the, this change is being presented um, um after speaking with the chief. Um we are small properties, especially the Townhouse Motel, twenty rooms. All the properties in City of Weed are constructed many, many, many years ago. I don't even know when, but like Hylo was in fifties and sixties. Their room sizes are specifically like hundred fifty to less than two hundred. One of the ordinance here requires room size to be two hundred. We cannot go and change that room size, that's one. In the apartment hotel, it says such facilities typically maintain inner lobby. We are exterior corridor hotels. I cannot make it a corridor, interior corridor for, based on this zone change. Also, it requires of having refrigerator, microwave, dishwasher or kitchenette sink and self-serve laundry. We have many apartments in City of Weed. Does all the apartments in individual units have laundry services or they are common? But motel will require to have individual room have the laundry services? That's, that doesn't seem right. Also, on the, the, on the extended stay hotel, it says it has to be fifty percent of the room. That's a huge. And Weed, I, I'm not sure how city staff has come up with these numbers without being, asking one of us being like how it will affect the hotel owners. So, the way this specifically written is, is really, really harmful. Like just recently, I had a question from one of the working company coming out of the area for a ten week stay and I couldn't tell them that I can allow that or not because this is what's going on. If people are not going to stay in City of Weed, then they will stay somewhere else, like Dunsborough or Wyrica. And that means that a lot of these people has to travel to come to work in the City of Weed area. That will bring extra burden on their cost of the overall uh project. And also, B, we are being very close to the Main Street. If we are not having, allow people to stay in our places, we feel that Main Street will not be benefit from us as well. So, can I finish?
Please.
So, I think that, you know, there should be some other consideration made. I'm willing to work with the city and, and provide such, such, such suggestions such as some shared kitchen, shared laundry, something that can work better, not fifty percent of the room. Maybe there's little less that we can come up with. But I think councilmembers, please consider that it does have a huge impact on uh motel owner like me and please uh uh send it back to the city to revisit and work with us.
All right, thank you for your presentation. Um I will have questions for you in here when we get through the rest of these, but do we have any other people in the audience that want to speak for or against the ordinance?
Uh I'm an employee of the, the largest hotel in town. Uh I'm not going to mention the name because I'm not here representing them. I had no idea this was even on the agenda tonight. But uh I can tell you from a practical standpoint, uh there are situations where people do come and stay for more than thirty days. Quite often, it's people who are uh part of construction crews and the construction that's been going on, going for years on I five. Uh quite often, we get people who are working uh even from Europe come in and will spend a month and a half working on the, the machinery at Crystal Geyser. Uh these are not people who are using the hotel as an apartment. And it's impractical to think that these people coming in for forty-five days are going to rent an apartment. Um the uh, uh our particular hotel has one unit that would meet the kitchenette requirement uh as far as a, a, an actual kitchenette. All the rooms have a microwave and a, and a small refrigerator. But uh I don't, from my understanding of what is being asked, uh it, it would be very cost inefficient to upgrade those, uh enough units to, to satisfy whatever this is. So, uh as the gentleman said, uh what we may end up doing then is that we're forcing people who would be here spending their money in Weed, uh paying their occupancy tax in Weed and forcing them to go to Mount Shasta or Dunsborough or, or even Wyrica where it wouldn't have this ordinance. So, I would just ask that you consider all the ramifications of what you're asking. I'm sure there are reasons why you're asking it, but it may have unintended consequences that actually damage the, the economy here. And that's it.
Thank you. Do we have any other comments for or against the ordinance proposal? All right, I think at this point, we'll uh have some, we have no other uh comments. We'll have a staff response and then council will ask questions.
Uh I would just, you know, part of the discussion tonight is how this would affect uh some of the hotels currently. This has been brought about because of ongoing issues with several hotels in town. Um this has been in, as I stated earlier, some time in process. Two of those hotels are currently shut down that we are having difficulty with, but we are still having issues with the collection of TOT with some of the hotels. Um and that is a big part of this. We, we have people who are refusing audits, which is part of the requirement under their business license uh and are not paying the assessed fines from the company that uh does those audits and monitors our, our uh business licenses. Moving forward, uh I would also state that, you know, um one of the hotels that uh they spoke, that spoke here tonight actually has at least three rooms, possibly more, that do meet those requirements because they're currently uh offered on Airbnb, which they don't have a conditional use permit for to do so as a short-term stay apartment, but that's how they're being offered online, which means they're probably circumventing TOT taxes by doing that. But those do have the amenities that are required for long-term stay. But um, you know, I don't know how many people are coming and staying somewhere that's, you know, I don't know if they're offering a long-term, more than thirty day deal, but at two hundred and four dollars a night, obviously they're getting some, somebody to do that. So, that's, that's currently where we're at. We're, we're trying to avoid problems that we've had in the past. Someone spoke to the issue that I did mention to them, that we've had problems with long-term stays and the definition of a tenant or resident. Um that's, that's been an issue. Uh we've had some, I've had discussions with hotel owners, none of them are here tonight, regarding that, when they want the people out because of, you know, certain problems that they're having and then they're claiming all of a sudden they went from a, somebody who was paying for thirty days or more, now all of a sudden they're telling me they're a, a single night occupant and that they're collecting TOT on that person. So, but yet they're not producing documents that support that.
Okay. Um well, I uh, I do have a question in regards to TOT because I know that we're at least eighty-five, maybe a hundred thousand dollars plus in arrears with hotels that owe the city TOT tax that have not paid for the last year or so, which does impact a lot of our community's programs that rely on TOT. So, um do we have a finite, a, a firm number on the, the amount of tax that's delinquent at this point? And do we have a number of hotels who are involved with that delinquency?
Well, I can only speak to two right now. I, I defer to the city clerk on that since she typically handles the business licenses and HDL contact. I do know we have one that was eighty-six thousand dollars in arrear. Um yet that owner walked away from that property and it's currently in bank possession. Uh we have another one that refused an audit because their numbers were off. HDL requested to do an audit, they refused, they were assessed fines and penalties based on what their number should have been and they're refusing to pay that at this time.
Okay, and how does the TOT be affected by long-term stays? If we're talking less than thirty days or more than thirty days, where does that cut off with that?
Well, I would, they don't become a tenant till the, till they reach thirty days or beyond. So, if they're renting, but if they have an agreement, I believe it would start out that way as not collecting TOT because if their plan is to be there longer than thirty days from the get-go.
So, if a hotel had somebody that was there for three weeks in a room and they checked out and moved to another room for an additional three weeks, that still will not be considered long-term tenancy?
No, but the hotel can't require that either. The hotel can't require somebody to check out and move to another room or check out and return to avoid that, establishing that tenancy at the uh, at the hotel.
Okay. All right, any further questions, but I'll let the rest of the council go because I'm sure that we share a few.
I have a couple. So, if they're staying-
Longer than thirty day, I suspect there must be some form of rental contract besides the normal motel contract that you would sign when you go stay a night or whatever.
Well, again, this has been a long process to get to this point. This has been one of many issues the city's been dealing with to get here. In the past dealings with the police department and the hotels, we haven't always been able to been, be given an accurate rental agreement.
Okay.
So, that's also been an issue. And then I have an owner that, or manager who's telling me, I want this person out. Oh, no, they didn't rent more than thirty days or no, we don't have more than five, more than five people staying in the hotel, it makes it a long-term hotel when they actually do. Um so, I've also had them try to tell me that they are collecting TOT to, to show that they're not when they can't produce the documents that-
So, if they're staying more than thirty days, we do not get TOT?
Not typically, no.
Okay. We're not getting TOT out of two major air, major motels that uh just have refused to pay or have just refused to have an audit either direction?
Well, they are paying current, the one that refused the audit, I believe is paying currently. They just have not paid the assessed fines and penalties based on refusing the audit, which they're required to do.
The last thing is that at two oh four a night for thirty days is six thousand dollars a month, if my math serves me well. I don't know why somebody could not rent a place for six thousand dollars a month. Uh I'll go buy a couple spots if you're willing to pay that much, I suppose, but um-
Yeah, but how do you pull this out when, I hate to say, they're not being honest about it and they're not paying what comes, the fairies should be coming to the city? There's no way of telling if someone's staying thirty-one days or forty-five days or if that person just stayed the thirty days, say, or thirty-one and now they're saying, well, you have to leave, no, I'm not leaving. So, do they have to go through addictions then?
We've had that circumstance as well uh with a couple hotels where they've had a long-term and they would not uh- in fact, in fact, two of those hotels are here tonight. Um or people are speaking on behalf of those, where we've dealt with that, where they've been there so long and I believe they actually might have been the same person, now that I think about it, that stayed at one and then had to be removed and then went to another one.
These are issues of city problems I don't think the city needs.
We also have one that's shut down because of, of uh, I guess I could just say bedbugs.
Well, so they're, they're shut down because they're in a transition. Um the, the bank foreclosed.
Okay.
Um and that, they are working with a hotel management company to try to restore that hotel to operating condition. Um hopefully they get that done soon, but that, that's, that's the current problem. But we were having issues at that hotel prior.
Right.
And this is just part of those issues.
So, again, I ha- I always hold the position that if you bring a problem or you create a problem and you bring it to city council to resolve that problem, I, I believe you have to look at resolving the problem on, on the side of the city itself. Um the individual owner of a business is going to have to take the backseat on that case. Uh I think we've done that in the past where sometimes the problem has just gotten out of hand. And it sounds like that's the point we've reached here. And then we, we're not collecting property or a TOT tax, which compounds that problem to other organizations again that participate, that get the benefit of that TOT tax. Um including the city. But anyway, that's just my two cents, I guess.
All right, looks like we-
Can I, I'm not sure, but can I interrupt uh my side?
Please.
Like, you know, my side of it?
Sure.
Or, you know, I, I'll, I'm just try to be as much as I can say. So, Police Chief, you are absolutely right, those, those are certain problems that have, does happen in the motel. Um I want to address that one thing that we have mentioned about Airbnb. So, we, just at least from the Hylo perspective, we have one unit that we do market on Airbnb, but when we collect the money, we do pay TOT on it. We put it as a revenue, we charge the customer as a TOT and we, we pay for it, just, just to be, uh for the record, for the Airbnb. Um we rarely have rent- We rarely have rented uh that house more than thirty days. Might be one time uh if I recall, but otherwise that house just generally go for one night or a couple of nights during the long weekend. Also, it sound like there is a couple of hotels that might not have paid audit uh and the failure to pay audit. Also, there is another hotel that might not have paid eighty-seven thousand dollar of the T O T. That's the financial thing that I believe, and that should not have this zoning change. There should be some other way of dealing uh the those financial issues that the, you know, owner or whoever not paying or not uh submitting the money, I know that city of, any city would really highly depend on this revenue and because you have a project that you fund from it, I I get it, right? But there should be another way of dealing with it rather than the people to, this changes to to happen, it requires we are not talking five thousand, ten thousand dollar, hundreds of thousands of dollar to make this this happen. So you know, tha- that's a burden that we are going to carry uh as a owner as well.
Please.
So I look at this resolution in the same light as as some of the city council members up here, but I want to add a different perspective. And that is I believe our city should uphold standards for somebody who finds himself in a situation where they need to stay in a place for longer than thirty days. And these are some basic living conditions that a person of any s- that we should respect. Um having laundry facilities when you're staying somewhere longer than thirty days so that you can live like a regular human being. Um and so I think there has to be an acknowledgement in some level that the planning commission probably considered what do you, what are the basic living requirements for someone who's staying longer than thirty days? And we're talking about the exceptions, not the problems that this was designed as far as a resolution to deal with. And so for that reason, I on the resolution and um independent of the T O T tax, because I do recognize that there's business owners who do follow it. I I think the things that are recommended are things that any decent human being should be afforded if they're staying somewhere for longer than thirty days.
I I agree, counsel man, um but you know, lo- lot of places like people even in their houses doesn't have laundry services, they go outside to do the laundry. As a high-low, we have the RV park and we have the shared laundry where people can put the coin and clean their uh uh clothes. So I agree with you that that facility should be provided and I do acknowledge it, but it should not be required in every single or more than fifty percent of the room, that's what I'm saying.
I I understand, thank you for the comments.
So that was one of my questions, um and and maybe that was a misrepresentation, my part reading to the ordinance, but so we're requiring that fifty percent of the rooms have to have laundry services in room, or is it a shared laundry availability? Resolve that that requirement?
Mr. Mayor, if I
If I may.
If I may.
Please, you're breaking up a bit there.
Sorry about that, um hotel wifi. Yes, so the way that this ordinance is written, um it defines an extended stay hotel such that it would have to have laundry facilities, et cetera, kitchen facilities, and there's, I think there's three different definitions, some of the, they're each slightly different. But what then the ordinance does is it says those uh extended stay hotels are not allowed anywhere in in weed. So whether or not someone's um hotel complies with those is sort of irrelevant at this point because they wouldn't be allowed anyway. What this ordinance allows is only stays of thirty days or less and at and those are at hotels and motels which do not require all of those amenities. The council could change that. And for example, we could keep those definitions, for example, or 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 change them somewhat. And then allow extended stays with a use permit, for example, in certain zones. Uh and that was, that is within the council's discretion. A substantive change like that, however, would need to go back to planning commission. Uh and this council could uh refer this back to planning commission if that was its interest with the direction to look into um allowing extended stay hotels with certain amenities uh with a use permit, and whether or not that was something that the planning commission would recommend, and if so, uh what would that ordinance look like?
Okay, so the conditional use permit solves the individual businesses who are compliant, you know, with all the rest of the issues that have been presented tonight. Now, how does this affect Airbnb? If we're saying that this ordinance removes the allowance of any long-term stay, how was the impact on that? Because I know Airbnb is kind of its own little thing.
Uh Airbnbs would similarly be bound by this. I think uh we've got in the ordinance it the definition is broad enough that if you're an Airbnb, you've got to rent it for less than thirty days and you gotta pay T O T on that.
Okay.
David, can I ask for one additional question? In the community facilities district, there is a requirement under their C D F rules that any rental has to be greater than thirty days. Is there any legal issues with us instituting this ordinance, which is essentially going to terminate that owner's right to be able to rent?
Uh I don't think that would terminate that right, I think that those rules would probably supersede. You know, tha- those rules would apply because it's a more specific rule over the more general, so in the C F D, for example, you essentially you can't have an Airbnb.
Okay. Any other questions from council?
One, couple of quick ones from me, I'm just hoping for a little clarity here. What I'm getting is, how many units do you have available for Airbnb? One, two?
Three units, but all those three units are are like a full apartment style with the um KitchenAid. And we just started putting those on, the before it was not on, but Airbnb is one of the uh way that people are searching in the area. So we just put it on, but it comes from us as a standard room, so it's either we sell it as a walk-in room or we are selling as Airbnb. So anyway, we are collecting the uh money and we are paying to the the city, but I believe we are currently marketing three rooms as Airbnb.
I was just asking because I'm familiar with the property, so there's ones, separate residence.
Yes.
And then you have a couple units with
Couple of units that are with KitchenAid that we are marketing uh online with Airbnb. But you know, it's like, on average, we might be renting one or two nights a month.
And those are laundry fas- they have laundry facilities, shared?
Not shared, those are at least two units, I can confirm that they do have a laundry. Uh the third unit, I'm not hundred percent sure, but I believe they do have a laundry in those rooms, because there's a, those are the bigger units uh compared to the normal size, less than two hundred square feet hotel rooms. These are more like, you know, like li- literally like an apartment with a one-bedroom KitchenAid uh living area.
On average, what is the occupancy beyond thirty days?
On average, on those those units?
Yeah, do you use, do you use thirty days or more for six months out of the year? Seven months of the year?
On those units, I very rare
No, on on the whole?
On overall, yes, we do have a especially summer times, uh like, you know, maybe three, four, five rooms on a on a couple of months basis, in a winter time, maybe one room or two rooms. On a, on that kind of basis that we have, it just depend on what kind of work people are coming, like when there is a Pacific Power, a lot of line works was going on, lot of people came from out of area, you guys might have seen the Tree LLC uh trucks. Those people were staying for a longer period of time. So it depend on what the the reason for they are coming here for, so uh when we had a mill fire, uh both on my property, we were a part of with the county and we provided lo- many, many rooms for over a year for that, for that matter of fact.
Could, could we als- David, could we also ask the
Yeah, I just wanted to mention
Okay.
I just wanted to mention, uh sorry, uh Mayor Protem, the, there's a, there's a specific ordinance um regarding short-term rentals, which are Airbnbs in our code, and so this this the ordinance that's before you tonight is different and it and it wouldn't affect those rules regarding Airbnbs.
Okay. How about the fact, could the planning commission write in specific conditions that would allow uh us to or the owner of a motel to go beyond the thirty days? In other words, if we have, when we had the fire, we, of course, that was a um emergency basis. But there are other long-term projects in the city. Can we take a particular project and extend that if there was ca- enough cause? Or would that be too much judgment?
Well, it sounds to me like that would be the conditional use permit process.
Yeah.
Outside of an emergency being declared.
So at least our law enforcement would be aware of that as well.
Well, I believe uh city attorney had mentioned that there is the ability for both enforcement by staff and by council under emergency to to have that waived under certain conditions. If you're looking for something that's well, I mean, granted, a- a- as always enforcement, um you know, so as staffing and and whatever allows, there is a level of enforcement that every code is not constantly being monitored. I mean, we we try to, but you know, sometimes we pay more attention to traffic violators than we do to public nuisances, or that's what we have code enforcement for, but um where I'm going with this is, you know, you have emergency declarations that would have probably waived that without having it written in. And then we also have the ability to uh also in certain circumstances. But what you're saying, if you're looking for something specific to construction projects or something like that, you'd probably want that written in or an or some sort of process.
Some sort of, I'm just looking for a process, I'm not here to, and I don't think any of us here are to ruin somebody's business. But I'm also kno- know that we're here to kind of govern how those businesses don't impact the city in a negative manner. And I don't know if it's possible to write something in.
Do we have David frozen?
Looks like it.
I can hear you guys, I'm
Okay.
I'm just present.
So David, a question, procedural question, if we were to accept the way that it's written, could we also send a recommendation back for them to review and consider a permit process? Conditional use, whatever the process would be?
Is the, well, in whether or not i- is the question whether or not we can, we would be able to allow extended stay more than thirty days with a use permit, is that the question?
Yeah.
Yes.
Yes, then the answer is yes, that would be something that um we can do and that would require going back to the planning commission because it's a substantive amendment to a zoning ordinance.
I guess I should be more clear in my question, is there a way for us to pass this and then make a request to send it back for consideration of an an additional section regarding how to create a use permit process? In other words, temporarily have it established while they're doing that?
Yes, that would be the
Shared laundry services, th- these are the RVs, so they have their own bathroom plus kitchen as well. Uh but that's why I was saying overall, like, we should look towards a shared, shared kitchen, uh shared laundry to help going this route, while certain things is also we can implement such as having a rental agreement uh process, like we have to produce the rental agreement to uh not having a tenancy issue. I think those are the more documentation issue that that we need to address and not the zoning issue.
What do you mean, a shared kitchen?
Shared kitchen means like uh people have a, we have a one room with the kitchen, and then people can go, take their food, cook it, and and take it back to their room and eat it.
So it
I have a question for you.
Yes.
So um I'm just trying to clarify something. So with with a customers that comes in says, I'm gonna have a six-months contract, you know, with uh the lumber company, and I want to stay at your place, it was six months. Do you have a different contracts for those as a resident who?
At my other property, ma- yes, I do create a uh rental agreement that how you, they would do it with the uh with the just like apartment or a house or something. Uh here specifically, we have not, but I'm happy to implement those kind of rental contracts between the uh motel on- owner and the uh on the part people who are renting it. I I think those are the things that we should uh looking to uh to to help our uh, you know, police department not have those issues.
Right, right.
And if I'm not able to produce that, then I'm wrong and they are, they are not a monthly tenants. But if I am able to produce that, this is the agreement that we have signed, then that should, you know, justify.
Right, I'm just trying to clarify as is uh a person using your hotel as a resident, as a a unit to stay versus a person who is
Let me give you another example, like lot of time we get the customer from the Health and Human Services, people are looking to get better path. That's another kind of business, right? There are some people are get homeless for whatever reason, they are getting a better path. Then we get an email from the Health and Human Services saying, okay, we are placing this customer for thirty days. And then their their renewal comes thirty days. So that is our agreement with the human services that's like, okay, they are staying with us thirty days. So you know, I'm not writing any professional contract in that case, it's just our understanding that we had. But all those businesses, I'm talking, we are, we are on the age of losing hundreds of thousands of dollar of business with this ordinance.
Wait, you're, you're getting contracts from the county?
Yes.
Homeless?
N- not homeless, people who are gonna get better, right? Or sometimes like, you know, somebody have a maybe domestic violence issue and they might have to stay there for a while, you know? So we do have so- some of those clients that stay with us for months and months and months.
Does that be going on now?
I uh, we haven't been, but since Motel Six has closed down, I do have a couple of clients who came to us, yes. It was the primarily business for the Motel Six, but in the past, we did have a couple of those uh rooms as well. And and the South County being the very hard hit because Mount Sasta won't uh give those rooms to them. So it's our only options for H H S is the uh Weed and Dunsborough are the two options. The reason they have to put us with them in the motel because there are not many apartments available for them to put it in. Like, you know, vacancy in apartments are very, very limited. So sometimes they want to find the apartment, so they will stay with us for a month or two, when they find the apartment, they move on to the apartment.
Sir, is there any reason with the county you couldn't uh agree to a twenty-nine-day renewal period?
But they're staying, I cannot kick them out, so even I stay them twenty-nine, they are gonna be twenty-nine. They're overall, the state and the federal laws are they're staying more than thirty days. Even I have contract for four weeks, let's say twenty-eight days. If they're not checking out completely, switching the room is not an option for us. They have to check out of the property at least for one day, then they can check back in. Where are these people are gonna go for one day?
So what he's speaking about is a transitional housing versus tenant and resident. That's something else that we've had to deal with because we've had people get in under transitional housing and refuse to leave and claim residency. So that's something that wasn't brought up, but that is what he's brought it up is, that's what that's called transitional. They're there from anywhere from thirty days to twenty-four months. I do have a question, you said that only Dunsborough and Ma- and Weed are the only options for the for the county.
For the South County.
Why, why isn't Mount Shasta an option?
Because Mount Sasta generally does the business of the um uh visitors. So they, there might be one or two hotel that might be doing it, I'm not too familiar, but generally when I speak with the uh Health and Human Service caseworkers, that's what they are looking generally in the Weed and Dunsborough as an option, Mount Sasta get also very expensive.
That sounds like that needs to be a discussion between the city and and the county as to why.
It just get too expensive as well.
For me, that there's a large visible need for transitional housing in the city of Waireka. And I know there's seven million dollars of taxpayer money being spent to build that housing in Waireka. So that lends the question to me of why the county is sending people from Waireka to Dunsborough and Weed and not Waireka or Mount Shasta. And that's, that's a, that's a question that I think we need to seek answers from the county.
And I, and I think the other question is, is that that money comes from state and there's no reason that a T O T tax cannot be paid. Because that is occupying our hotel rooms that's blocking our money. Because that is occupying our hotel rooms that's blocking our money by a city, by a county action.
And, and I have to say one thing, uh. When I was referring to extended stays because of projects, that is not one of the things that, that I would even consider. Uh, I, I do not feel that is that transitional housing thing, uh, for a lot of reasons, the folks that do transitional housing and are moved out of the area be, are because they're not going into the new facility because they do not fo- want to follow the rules to begin with.
So, I just wanted to thank you for pointing that out because it brought up a good point as far as sending this back for clarification to the planning commission. You use the term project, the transitional housing is actually called, originally it was called Project Room Key and now called Project Home Key. So when you say send it back for projects, uh, you might wanna clarify what the project is, if that's your intent, okay.
I do wanna make sure that it's, it's, it would be projects. I don't know how to word that, I, I think I would send that back, I don't know if David could help with the verbiage on it, but something, I, I'm looking more, as you explained it originally, for for workers coming into the city to, to perform work, to do jobs around the county. Transitional housing is, in my mind, uh, has not been ver- worked for us very well here and been not very productive, uh.
I, I.
It's my opinion.
So, um, I, I want to bring back to that why it's a state money and we cannot pay the transitional occupancy tax. And I don't mind paying it, if that's the route we want to go, let's just say that in a city of weed, we need to pay the transit occupancy tax on, even on every single rooms, even more than thirty days. People are going to stay with us even their long-term pay TOT, I don't mind, please just don't take that away in a way. If we need to just say we need to pay TOT on every single person, let's just say that and we will pay TOT on every single person. The, 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 the books were allowing us to have not collect that more than thirty days, so we were not collecting it. If we have to collect it, we'll collect it.
So, it sounds to me like there's more clarification and definition needed for this ordinance. That we have items that, there's questions with the county operation, uh, and certain types of definitions. As well as, you know, I, you know, speaking as myself, I do agree that we need a conditional use permit, um, potentially avenue for businesses who are, you know, on the up and up and doing the right thing to be able to, to come to the, the commission and ask planning commission for the ability to have that permit, knowing that that permit can be revoked by staff if it's not followed. And so, so David, is this something that we would need to refer this back to the planning commission to get those clarifications and process amendments taken care of?
Yes, that is correct.
Al- alternatively, if we wanted to move forward in its current condition, then we just place it on for a second reading?
Correct, so I guess your options, you have three options. One is to do nothing. Um, the second option would be to e- move to introduce the ordinance and also direct, uh, staff to bring this, uh, back to the planning commission for discussion regarding, um, the ability to do an extended stay with a conditional use permit, what that would look like. So that would be kind of a hybrid, and then the, and then the third option, uh, would be to not move forward with the ordinance and just refer the entire thing back, so that it's all done uh, in one, um, the review of the extended, the extended hotel with conditional use permit, and then it would all come back as one, uh, ordinance later to this council.
David, can the, can the city council view the, is the planning commission on tape?
It is.
Okay, so, I would lo- love to see the reasoning behind some of this. Is that allowed? To look at what the planning commission discussed to make decisions?
Yes, that was an open meeting.
Yes, publicly posted.
Okay.
It was very long, I watched it.
It's publicly posted on YouTube, so it's available to the public as well as the council.
All right. I would move to go forward with the ordinance as written. And on second reading, we could make the decision of whether we wanted to, send it back to the planning commission at that po- at that point.
I second that motion.
So are you asking then that we move forward with future, if the planning commission to, to meet between now and our next meeting to clarify definitions and the permit process? Or are you moving forward as?
I just wanna move forward, I would like to see the tape. And then if I, I feel and the council feels if they wanna view it, that we need to go back to the planning commission, do so then. The answers could be on the planning commission tape, I don't know if, I haven't seen it, so I don't really know if there's that much there. Or if it was just a, no, we don't wanna do this.
Well, it was. He wasn't there.
I was, I was out of town and I was.
Right, I'm just saying, it was just a note, a, a, a letter that he wrote, so I don't think there was a whole lot of discussion on it because there wasn't, you couldn't ask questions. So that's what I'm saying, that's kind of what I saw, because it was pretty quick.
It's not, yeah.
But anyway, that's what happened.
Well, there has to be other meetings where this was discussed, I think it's a matter of locating them.
No, we could still send it back, but I'm just going, without me, with, with just what we have here, I don't know the reasoning why, behind the planning commission, since sometimes they see things that we don't see.
So there was not much discussion, I would invite you to watch the video. Um, it was a staff report presenting the ordinance and very limited discussion, the discussion was more about one hotel in the current status. It was not necessarily about anything that pertain to the ordinance. And then I think the entire meeting was about seven minutes.
I, I stand on seconding the motion.
Okay, all right.
I don't think they had enough for much. It's turned out, I took it even when I was there going, well.
I still, uh, we can always refer it back on second reading, if we feel that, uh, we, we short-circuited this process here, so. I'll stand on the motion and Melissa second.
Okay, any further discussion? Okay, all in favor of moving forward with the, um, current ordinance as written?
Aye.
Aye.
Do you wanna do a roll call vote, Mr. Mayor?
Let's do a roll call vote.
Councilmember Mazzoni?
Yes.
Councilmember Palphini?
Yes.
Councilmember Verisong?
Yes.
Councilmember Whitstang?
At least for now, aye.
Mayor Parham?
Uh, yes, understanding that this is first reading that we may kick it back before it goes into second reading. All right, we will now close the public hearing. Move on to council business, um, first item, fire by motion. Council will consider introduction and first reading by title only of ordinance number four eight five, two thousand twenty-five. Designated fire hazard severity zones as recommended by the California Department of Forestry and Fire Protection.
Yes, I do have some handouts, unfortunately it was late to get them, so I have one of each if you guys wanna pass them down, it kinda has some more information, but I'll, I'll talk about it. So, CalFire, uh, updated the fire hazard severity map specifically for the local response areas, which is, uh, the city of Weed. And the last time they had an update was in two thousand eight for this area. And, uh, now with the update, the entire city is within the uh, very high fire hazard severity zone. Um, it is a requirement from the state that we adopt an ordinance uh, that accepts this map the way they gave it to us. I have some information about kind of where they came up with this and, uh, some definitions that I'll go over. Uh, the first one is that, uh, what do fire hazard severity zones measure? It says the maps evaluate hazard, not risk. And sorry, I'll start, this is a document, um, from CalFire that they, uh, sent out with a, basically a fact sheet, is what they called it. So the map evaluates hazard, not risk, hazards based on physical conditions that create expected fire behavior over a fifty-year period without considering short-term modifications. Risk is the potential damage a fire can do to the area under existing conditions, including fuel reduction projects, defensible space, and ignition-resistant building construction. So, what are the requirements within the fire hazard severity zones? Uh, part of the documents that I gave you in, include the minimum requirements, that colorful document that I sent is just, uh, the ba- most basic, uh, requirements that will come from this. Uh, there's also a document from the insurance commissioner. Uh, the, let's see, the California Government Code fifty-one, one eighty-two, which covers the defensible space code. The Public Resource Code forty-two ninety, which is the property development standards for roads, water supply and signage. And the chapter seven A of the California Building Code for Materials and Construction Methods for Exterior Wildfire Exposure. I mean, you'll see in that, the most colorful handout there that all of those are kind of covered, um, in the requirements for building within the high fire hazard severity zone. Let me get to, here we go.
Is most of the construction going on right now? Meeting those standards?
I believe so, yes, with the, uh, a couple of them are like the WUWE or Wildland Urban Interface Building Codes. They are being built to that standard. Um, and the defensible space code is technically one hundred feet or to property boundary. So when there's not a hundred feet, it's defensible space within that property boundary.
So this current change then from the state fire marshal is not going to affect any of our current home builders in the rebuild process?
I'll have to de- uh, confirm for sure, but as far as I understand, um, the buildings and the building codes have been, these are the ones that we've been utilizing for those, uh, structures.
Sounds like our, our codes were adopted after two thousand twenty, so our building code standards are higher than this was from two thousand eight already then.
Yes.
I think that the thing that's coming is that I know the insurance companies are tending to look at what surrounds your home. Not new homes in particular, because it's a lot of new construction and it kind of bare. But those that exist already, proximity to house, uh, proximity to slope and proximity to ac- and access, so I, I don't know, I, I think we can correct some, we can't correct all. I mean, if you go out to Hammond's, you can't correct Hammond's, it, uh, not unless you have a few hundred million dollars and maybe might not get the roadways done with that, um. So that, some of the areas around here are impossible, but they do reflect upon us, I believe, and I think that's what that based on the meeting I went to yesterday and based upon what you're saying tonight, um, some of that's gonna impact us no matter what we do, because we just can't reach there. Just monetarily, uh, reach those points. But there's things we can do within our city, and I think that's the important part that I was listening to yesterday, um, to keep us safe.
Well, the, the big key here is making sure that everything within our power as a council and the staff that we can do to help our residents with the rebuilding process, we're doing, um, anything that's, could hinder that in the future or with insurances out of our control. But we do have, um, you know, fire department and staff are working on this very large fire mitigation, uh, you know, grant that was awarded, as well as we have, uh, participation heavily at the CWPP, so I think that we're, um, we're doing everything within our power to correct the fire severity issues and, uh, what Sacramento chooses to do beyond what we can control is beyond our control.
Absolutely, um, yeah, as much as we want to do everything in our power to get this to go down to higher or medium, the, the main thing is, is if we're creating a, a safer environment, whether the map shows it or not, we're doing that for the community. So, ho- hopefully the map would show it eventually, but, uh, we wanna, you know, prevent those and, and create a safer area, um, no matter what.
David, can I ask for clarification? The ordinance requires first, then adoption by a local agency pursuant to government code five one one seven seven. Is that a state agency or is that us as the local agency?
It's, that's the local agency.
As in meaning our city board?
Yes.
Correct, e- every city, uh, that I represent has either already or is in the process of adopting their local responsibility area, uh, fire hazard map.
And then if I could ask, um, can I ask clarification, I, I was able to request prior to this the prior CalFire Hazard Zone map. And from two thousand twenty-four, it is a small portion of the city of Weed, and now it's the entire city of Weed. Is that the effect of the mill fire, or is that something else?
So, on that map, that map, I know the date, I saw the one that you saw, there is a two thousand twenty-four date on that map. But that was actually last updated in two thousand eight, that, that map, um, with I think just that one section that had very high fire severity in it, um, and to answer your question, I would assume so, but it doesn't directly say the city of Weed is now in very high due to the mill fire and the bull's fire. But it does say it takes into account fire history in the area.
So in other words.
Which would include those fires.
So in other words, if someone criminally or, or criminally negligently started a fire, then it's going to affect the status of what is reflected as our hazard zone?
So it sounds like.
I would say, yeah, so fire history is not determined on what caused the fire. It's just that there was a fire in the area and this is what happened when it was there.
And I think it also determines the pattern of fire. I mean, both of those fires in and of themselves, if they happened on one location prior to high winds, which is typical to us, prior to lower fuel sources, wouldn't have burned so many structures. But if a fire occurs, what the history shows is that we burn a lot. So that's kinda.
I think with that, it's, uh, for the seven YouTube viewers we have at home, uh, this is why it's important that we not have negligently started fires from either, um, alleged negligence with properties and or arson caused, so, uh, mow your lawns and clean your debris.
Um, and I, I, I assume there's nothing that we can do to affect this particular mapping, even though we now have a large percentage of the area that is within the wind zone is now being rebuilt at higher standards, probably higher than the majority of the state because we've been wiped out. Um, that our brush has been burned because our city has been taken out, or that we're actively engaged in mitigation through grant. Um, are we just stuck with this report, I guess is my question?
Short answer is yes, uh, the only options we have are, for lack of better words, to make it worse, which would be if we had um, areas within the map that were not very high, say medium or high, the only options we have would be to go to the state and s- say we would like to request those to be higher. We cannot make anything lower.
And if we were not to agree with this report, is there anything that's going to affect our grants for fire mitigation?
I don't know how that would affect that. I, I know that it's a, uh, accepting this ordinance was a state requirement, but how that would affect grants or our current grants if we didn't, I'm not sure. but how that would affect grants or our current grants if we didn't, I'm not sure.
Is there a fiscal that says it's unknown at this time? So what? What is that?
So when we, when I did the Agenda Memo, it's unknown. There, there could be a fiscal impact if, say, those building codes, if we weren't already building to those building codes, not necessarily fiscal impact for the city, but for people building new houses. The, the price for, you know, fire-resistant materials can be higher than non-fire resistant materials. Or the, you know, roof materials can be more expensive if they're, if they are up to the required code that this requires. Not necessarily, I mean, I guess a fiscal impact could be to us that if we have a project within the city, we would abide by these codes as well.
David, do we create any liability for us if we adopt this fire map, adopting the hundred-foot defensible space and the other requirements and we fail to enforce the codes on people who are in occupied dwellings?
There is discretionary immunity that would likely prevent someone from claiming that our, that the city's failure to enforce a particular law would lead to liability on the city's behalf. So there, there are some protections in state law with respect to our enforcement. But I, I wouldn't say that catapultically. It's going to depend on the particular facts and circumstances of the situation.
Is there a mandatory requirement under the government code that we adopt this map?
Yes.
I'd venture to say that there are other council having the same conversation.
Yes.
But it's good for the public to know what we're considering.
I suppose, but I mean-
Yeah. To, to clarify for those walking at home is the State of California is requiring us by law to adopt this and that we have no recourse to lower the severity, only increase the severity of the map. In which case, based on the diligent work of our citizens, those who have homes and who are rebuilding those, bless you, and our staff with fire mitigation, I would encourage everyone in our public and their friends and family to write or call into the state, to the Fire Marshal, to express their opinions on the matter.
And then one last thing for the citizens. As far as making the City of Weed a fire-wise community, has the Weed Police Department, Weed Fire Department looked into it? And is there advantages that we should be considering for the citizens of Weed?
I have looked into the fire-wise community. At the, kind of the middle of last year, I started looking into it and I attended a meeting where some information was given that maybe there was going to be a change to kind of the weight a fire-wise community held. Essentially, at first it appeared that if you became a fire-wise community, it had drastic impacts on your insurance rates and ability to get insurance. And then that meeting I went to basically communicated that that was probably going to change and was already changing to the effect that I needed more information to see if it would be worth putting a lot of time into making that happen. If we were already doing projects without it and if there would be any impact by putting in a lot of effort to getting that done, if there was not going to be any positive change from it. But I can continue to look if that's-
There is a gentleman in Dunsmere, and I believe my conversations yesterday or some other day involved. If you talk with him, he's one, he works with the county and he's working for the City of Dunsmere. I would go straight to him and say, what's the advantage so far? I, I have seen rate-wise for insurance as very nominal. I think the biggest advantage is getting neighbors to work with neighbors to clean up their stuff. That's the big advantage, I think. You can't go cut all the trees by your house. You're not your trees. I mean, so you're limited on what you can do. Everybody has limits. So and I think if we take care of some of that, then I think we get it to be a, I think they're working how fast things spread. Thirty mile an hour winds makes it damn near impossible, but it will impact the spread. I mean, I think the closeness of the homes at Lincoln promoted spread pretty quickly, plus of the age of the community. Whereas if you go into an area like yours, the impact on residential is a lot less because, one, there's not many residences yet, but those trees won't be so pretty anymore. So again, I, I, I don't, I don't like signing stuff like this personally, but I don't think there's any advantage, disadvantage. I don't think we have a whole lot left.
No, I would just point out-
Insurance companies take the rates as they do anyway.
It's just interesting that the government code forgets that there are still rural parts of California that probably need codes other than when there's an occupied dwelling, but-
That's what makes District One so wild.
All right. Is there any further discussion from council on this item?
I would like to know if there's any benefit for a fire-wise community. I know we're talking about nominal change, but for people who are pinching dollars, I bet if it's a hundred bucks.
For some people?
Yeah.
A hundred bucks is a lot.
I can look at you.
Thank you.
I, but we can look, Fire Wise is independent of this, is that, am I correct?
Yes.
So I hate to be the outlier, but I will make a motion that the council introduce first reading of, by title only, of Ordinance Number four-eighty-five, twenty-twenty-five, Designating Fire Hazard Severity Zones as Recommended by the California Department of Forestry and Fire Protection.
I'll second.
We have a motion of the second? All in favor?
I hate to do this. Can I ask a question?
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm still there.
Are we required to notify, other than the public agenda, the residences that are affected by this?
If that's a question to me, then the answer is yes, we're supposed to. I think most cities are just putting it up on their website. But there's no need to send mail notice or, or publish notice.
All right. Thank you. Sorry, you want to call?
No, no, it's a valid question. And for our seven audiences, members on YouTube, please share with your neighbors.
There's nine tonight.
All right, well, we have a motion.
Sorry, I can't see that the gallery read, but is there any public comment for this one?
There is no public here, but I will ask for public comments in case there is somebody in the hallway. Looks like our public has left after their specific topic. So seeing as there is no public comments or public at all at this point in the meeting, and we have a motion of the second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? All right, motion carries. We will now move on to Item B, Planning Commission. By motion, the council will consider an appointment to the Planning Commission. One letter of interest has been received after all this time.
Nope, that's me. Yeah. So, yeah, before you, we have one letter of interest for the Planning Commission. Robert Thomas, he was invited to attend and he was in attendance, but I'm not sure where he went. We've had one seat open since two council members vacated their seats and left the Planning Commission and became elected officials. We appreciate that. So we do, it is nice to have one letter of interest. So it's up to the City Council to consider his letter and appoint him to the Planning Commission. He'll be appointed for a four-year term, and if you choose to appoint him, his first meeting will be May twenty-first.
All right. Any discussion amongst the council members? I'm assuming all of you have read his letter of intent along with the rest of your agenda packets.
I just personally feel, I, I've, I've known Robert for some time. First time I met him was, I'm going, who is this guy? But I have to say, I, I felt that he's actually kept the city pretty, and, and at his heart, so I'm in favor.
Yeah, I've known Robert a long time. And people go through things, I go through things, everybody here. And I think it's positive. And he, he's been around the city a long time. So I say, you know, he'll, give him a shot at it.
He led in, in the the start of the building of the community over there. So I thought that was a very good move.
I agree.
We were kind of at a stalemate as to when something would get built, and finally he jumped. It was good.
He gets involved, I mean, he's getting involved, so I'm, I'm good with it. He'll, we'll do good.
Certainly, myself don't have the long and storied history that you, both of you do, but I have seen his involvement with the rebuilding and the mill fire recovery. So I'm, I think that, you know, from the, the bit of action I've seen the last couple of years since the fire, that he's been a positive force in the community, so. So I will make a motion to to accept Robert to the Planning Commission.
I'll second it.
Any public comment? All right. Since there's no public or public comments, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. All right, we'll move on to Agenda Item ten, which is Staff Reports, and we'll start with Chief Carter.
All right. Last month, we had forty-five calls for emergencies. They were covered by two full-time personnel, three resident firefighters and three volunteer firefighters. We completed seventy hours of department training. Six of our volunteers completed forty hours of driver operator pump training. And two of our resident firefighters graduated from the Fire Academy last Friday. That's pretty exciting. We also participated and helped organize the South Siskiyou County Wildland Lion Readiness Drills that were last Saturday. We had over fifty people attend and help with this training at COS. Yesterday, we welcomed thirty Weed Elementary School third graders to the station and gave them a fire safety presentation and showed them around our equipment. Today, I attended an OES meeting covering the California Firefighters Assistance Agreement and also attended the CWPP meeting with you. And then with that, the, the people that received the grant for that is the Fire Safe Council.
Fire Safe Council. There you go. Thanks.
Yep. That's it. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Director Porterfield.
I don't have anything at this time, Kate.
Thank you.
I did notice our reports look different.
So, yeah, they're, they're out of the new software, but I'm currently halfway in the-
Software and halfway in that software, so it's been pretty fun. But, yeah, just working on budget, hoping to have you guys-
Your forehead all the time.
Yeah.
Well, you manage them both well.
Well, I'm giving it a shot.
Director Davis.
So Timberworks will be continuing working on college for about two to three more weeks. We are still doing quite a bit of investigation on our end of water lines that are not really supposed to be there and not doing what they're supposed to be doing in some cases. So our water shutdown tests will continue to happen. And there has been quite a bit of, of the public up there that's been helping us testing their water and stuff like that and being very patient with us.
All right. Chief Mayberry.
We participated in the Children's Day at the park. Tomorrow, we're going to be helping out COS with their kindergarten day. I believe fire is probably going to be there too. Yeah, so that'll be a good day. A little over a year ago, I can't remember the date, council, you know, instructed code enforcement, CSOs, you know, step up the code enforcement as of, I do get the public doesn't see because they see the large projects that we have that are going to take some time. But we do have some small projects that we're reaching some conclusions on. We had two property owners step up and under the recently passed red-tagged ordinance, we didn't have to enact that because the property owners were able to go through the court system to get the people out of the homes and then hopefully they'll bring those back up because they're, they're not in need of a lot of work. We have had two structures that were identified as red-tagged and the cost to rehab those was beyond what it would cost to just build a new home. So those have been removed and we have a third that's slated to be removed within the next couple of weeks. So we are making some progress in smaller projects, not necessarily the bigger projects that people aren't seeing. Other than that, just shout out to the Weed Cougars who are competing for a league championship tonight. Paul is up. Go get them, so.
Okay.
That would be the track team, so.
Thank you. And our city clerk, who's by herself over there?
So lonely, I know. Request for TOT were have been released. You will have those requests in the spreadsheet before you for the June meeting. The funds are down, as expected. What else? I had something else. We've got a Planning Commission meeting on May twenty-first. They're always the third Wednesday. If we have things, we will have two projects on, on that agenda. And we just keep, keep plugging away.
Can I ask David a question about the TOT?
Yes.
Hey, David, is there any other cities that you know of, of how they have alternative methods of collecting TOT than what we're doing right now?
There are a number of different ways to collect, and all of those options are available to the City of Weed that I'm aware.
Are any of them attachment to the property itself for arrears?
Yeah, but we need to go through the administrative procedures first.
Does that mean we have to rewrite an ordinance to the TOT to allow us to do that?
I don't, I don't, I, I'm not aware that we don't have the authority that any other city has. I'd have to double-check the ordinance. I can't answer that off the top of my head.
I think, are you referring that we have-
Rewrite the ordinance.
Or can we just cite them and then, then bring them before the administrative judge?
Yeah, there's a number of options. I mean, it's, it's essentially a debt. And so you can collect it as you could any other debt. So, you know, there's debt collection, there's filing a lawsuit, and then there's the administrative process. And that does just require we go through and exhaust, give them the opportunity to exhaust the administrative proceedings.
And could that administrative procedure be a fact-finding by the City Council as opposed to an administrative judge?
I do not believe that is how the ordinance is written, but I'd have to double-check.
Can it be written that the City Council is the final arbiter on that?
Yeah, probably.
I have a follow-up question regarding TOT, and I don't know if this is appropriate for the city clerk or the city attorney. But since it was discussed tonight in the meeting that we have an entity who is over eighty-five thousand dollars in arrears and has entered into bankruptcy or foreclosure, does that affect the amount of TOT that can be requested to the public for next year's budget? Or is the city going to be absorbing that loss and counting that as if it was collected?
I would have to, I personally would have to go back and look at that. I, I can't give any answer at this time.
Could it be possible that we consider placing on collection of TOT on a future agenda so that we can discuss?
Yeah, it sounds like it's a big issue, so we're-
I would point out that eighty-six thousand does include penalties, correct? Yeah, so it's not just TOT that uncollected TOT. It is penalties that are assessed. The, the person, the entity owes it, yes, but the entity has walked away. Our municipal code does read that the mortgagie in possession is still responsible. So that's being reviewed by-
Even though it's at eighty-six thousand, because it's set at a penalty, that's still something that we can recruit, correct? All the eighty-six thousand?
You can make an attempt, yeah.
So in other words, it sounds like we need to clean up our collection
We do.
procedures.
Good job getting on that, too. Good job getting on that too. Been awhile.
How much is the other motel owe?
I don't have the exact number, but I believe that's around seventeen thousand, but that's based again on penalty. For what is believed that was unpaid that during that year.
Okay. And so I, I take it, if we hadn't collected, we can't pass it out, but I don't.
Collected.
I don't know how we're looking at that.
That, that's, that's something that we'll have to bring back to you, I think, at this point.
Okay.
We've kind of gone beyond the staff report.
Okay.
All right, well, thank you, and uh, now we'll move on to our city attorney for staff report, Mr. Ruderman.
I am currently at the League of California City City Attorneys Conference, which is why I'm calling in remotely. And um, a lot of good sessions, hopefully I can give you guys an update on those when I'm back next month.
Excellent, all right, well, that concludes our um. Staff reports, and uh, now we were looking at adjourned a closed session.
I move to adjourn to close session.
I'll second it.
Okay, all in favor, you have any public comment on that? Seeing as there is no public, all in favor of adjourned a closed session?
Aye.
Aye, um, any opposed, we are so adjourned.
Mr. Mayor, do you want to also open the special meeting, because we had a closed session and a special meeting, we could just. Do that now in case anyone has public comment on that?
Um, yes, we will open for the special meeting that will take place after our closed session.
Still move.
Um, do we have any public comment on the special meeting? Seeing as there is still no public or comment, I will second that motion, all in favor of uh, the special meeting after we adjourn from closed session?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, all, any opposed, motion carries.